Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Councilwoman Danielle McCray, representing the 2nd District and Chair of the Committee. And in attendance, we have Councilman John Bullock, representing the 9th District. We have Councilman Conway, excuse me, Mark Conway, representing the 4th District. Councilman Ryan Dorsey, representing the 3rd District. And Councilwoman Felicia Porter, representing the 10th District. From the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themelis and also Sophia Geburnwatt. And from the Council President's Office, we have Nikki Thompson, who's here today. Last in attendance, we have Matthew Peters, who is staffed to our committee. Before we get started, as always, just a couple of ground rules. I'm just asking that you please stay muted until you are recognized by the Chair. That you do mute yourself when you are not speaking. That before you speak, you identify yourself, the agency or organization that you are with, and your position. After you are finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you are recognized by the Chair. We ask that committee members and city agency officials keep their video on for the duration of the hearing, unless there are technical difficulties preventing you from doing so. This is for transparency, so members of the public know that we are listening and paying attention. Last, for members of the public, there will be an opportunity for public testimony. You will have two minutes each for testimony. The committee is hearing Resolution 21-0075-R, Global Warming Solutions: Carbon Neutral City, for the purpose of calling on the Mayor, the Baltimore City Council, the Baltimore City Administrator, the Baltimore Office of Sustainability, and the Baltimore Commission on Sustainability to take all necessary actions to make Baltimore a carbon-neutral city by 2050. For this hearing, we're going to start with brief opening remarks from the resolution sponsor. And then we're going to hear reports from the agencies and give committee members the opportunity to ask questions. After that, we're going to move on to public testimony. I do want to begin by thanking Mayor Scott and the Office of Sustainability for releasing carbon-neutral goals for Baltimore City and the goal of meeting the goals by 2045. Also, Councilmember Conway for bringing this pressing issue to the forefront. Carbon neutrality is essential in the fight against climate change. We know that it will take an intentional and collaborative approach to ensure that Baltimore establishes this balance by 2045. It takes reimagining our city, including our roads, energy sources, agriculture, and infrastructure, to bring this to fruition. It's going to take our city agencies, our community-based organizations, our sustainability experts, and all city leaders to make a concerted effort in this race against time. And for those present at this hearing, the actions that we take now are not just for our health and safety. We are tackling this to protect our children and future generations from dealing with the disastrous impacts of climate change. I am eager to embark on this conversation, to learn more about what the city is currently doing, and what steps we must take. At this time, we're going to hear from the resolution sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Chair McCray, and excellent, excellent opening to the hearing. I really want to thank you again for hosting the hearing and giving us an opportunity to talk through these issues. Of course, this is part of a package that I put forward, really hoping that Baltimore, the City Council, and each agency that we work with is thinking long and hard about the impacts of climate change to our city and our role in addressing what is a global problem. This particular bill actually came off the heels of an IPCC report, the International Panel on Climate Change Report, last summer, that showed some pretty unnerving information about the path that we were on as a world with climate change. What we found out was that it was accelerating faster than we thought it was, and we're in a much worse position than we thought we'd be in, despite some of the changes that we made. That said, the report said that if we made every change that we possibly could as soon as possible, we'd be able to slow these things down in the next 30 years. That said, we're still seeing some significant impacts of climate change. 2020 was the hottest year on record. And the last other, the other two hottest records were in 2019 and 2016. So we see some significant impacts already from climate change, and we really need to step up our game. We're seeing some of that intimately here in Baltimore. We're seeing the impacts of the urban heat island effect, which I talk about frequently, and we had an opportunity to discuss yesterday in a hearing in the Ways and Means Committee. We're seeing, as a result, public health impacts. We're seeing a number of people have heat strokes and trouble coping with heat during the summer. And once again, this is an issue that disproportionately affects people who cannot afford to pay for AC. So this is a problem that we're dealing with today here. We're also seeing the impacts of flooding. As we see sea level rise and increasing storm surges, we see significant flooding, and as a result, sewage backups, which is a frequent problem here in Baltimore City with our aging infrastructure. So what we can tell is that a lot of the issues of climate change make some of the already longstanding issues in Baltimore, being an old city, that much worse when it comes to infrastructure. We know that air quality is an issue here in Baltimore, but it makes it that much worse when we're dealing with the impacts of heat and climate change. It makes asthma worse, and we had a number of significant air quality events during the past summer where there were warnings where you should stay inside. And this is not just because we have bad air in Baltimore, but also because climate change, the heat, makes a huge impact on the air quality. And lastly, one of the things that we're going to continue to see, and it will only become worse if we don't get a hold of it, is impacts on our economy. We know that Baltimore is going to see a significant increase in temperature over time. The estimates are that, you know, over the next 20 to 30 years, we're going to see the average temperature of Baltimore increase significantly, such that it will resemble a more southern city, I believe, like Memphis or Missouri. And so that's really, really, really important for us to understand when it comes to people who come to Baltimore and want to be outside and want to spend money here. We essentially discourage that if we don't begin to think about our role in slowing down climate change and hoping to make sure that we can help folks adapt here in the city. You know, this looks like a lot of the things that we're already talking about. And I'm going to applaud the Office of Sustainability for continuing to think long and hard about the plans that we need to be implementing to see these things through. That's transportation, that's efficiency from our homes, that's clean energy usage, and of course, electric vehicles, as we discussed yesterday in the Ways and Means Committee. But the biggest part of all this is we have great plans. We need to implement our plans. And so I really look forward to having that discussion today and understanding not only what we need to do, but how to do it, and how to do it in an expeditious fashion, so that we can get there sooner rather than later. As a father, the last thing I want to do is hand this problem to my three-year-old and two-year-old and say, "Oh, we couldn't deal with it." In 30 years, I don't want to be in the same place that I am as a 33-year-old. So really appreciate you, Chair McCray, for giving us the space and opportunity to talk about this. I want to applaud the Mayor's Office for hearing the conversation and really stepping up and upping the ante and committing to a more aggressive timeline. But then also helping us see this thing through, because it isn't just the plan, it's how to execute the plan. So thank you, Chair McCray, and I really look forward to the conversation here in the committee.
Thank you. And for committee members, we're going to start with our agencies, but we're also going to have a panel that's going to speak to us as well today. So as soon as we finish with the agencies, we're going to hear from our panel. And then we're going to go ahead and just ask the agencies questions. So I just ask that you hold any questions until after the panel is heard. And we're going to start with, you're with me, guys? And we're going to go ahead and start with our first agency, which is the Office of Sustainability.
Good morning. My name is Lisa McNeely. I'm the Director of the Office of Sustainability. Thank you, Chair McCray, Councilman Conway, and other members of the committee for inviting us here today to be able to talk about the actions that the office is taking to make Baltimore a cleaner and healthier community. I also, you know, thank you for the opportunity to talk more about the announcement that we were able to make yesterday. But first, I want to step back and just share that our office has been working on these issues since at least 2012, when we first released our Climate Action Plan and our 2019 Sustainability, which was adopted by City Council in early 2019. You know, charged us with taking, you know, a deeper look. You know, it asked us to update our Climate Action Plan and to make sure that we use an equity lens. And it also asked us to figure out how to commit to being a carbon-neutral city. And so very excited to share a little bit more about both of those. As Chair McCray mentioned, Mayor Scott announced yesterday in a press release, you know, with about a new timeline to sort of build on our current 30% reduction goal by 2025, to add a 60% reduction by 2030, and then to aim for carbon neutrality by 2045. You know, sustainability and improving the lives of everyone in the city has been a priority for the Mayor Scott, for the Scott administration. And, you know, we are, you know, very happy, very pleased to be sharing with you how we are working to try to get Baltimore to carbon neutrality by the earliest possible date. We, the city, as emissions are below our baseline. As of 2017, they were 13% below. We think that, we expect that they are still declining. We do not have our 2020 inventory done yet, but it's in process. So we've made progress. We've taken some key steps on energy efficiency, on renewable energy and other ways. But we know that more needs to be done. And one of the things that we're working on right now is a process that we started planning last year to update the Climate Action Plan and to include a really sort of deep and strong community engagement process. This will, we will use this process to ensure that the update is done equitably and that all stakeholders are in agreement about how best that we can attain carbon neutrality. You know, what that, there's some different definitions out there. We want to talk to, we want to sort of lead a conversation about community needs, some of which Councilman Conway talked about, which we are also very aware of through our work with the Climate Action Plan, the Sustainability Plan, and our Hazard or Disaster Preparedness Plan. And we want to create a plan that really identifies, sort of, you know, that builds on the existing actions, identifying the Climate Action Plan, but raises new possibilities, but also helps us prioritize the work that we do. We're going to be meeting with residents, helping, you know, working with them to understand their needs and visions for the future. And, you know, and also sort of how we, you know, prioritize our actions so that we meet the needs that we hear, you know, from whether it's high utility bills to healthy, clean air, disaster management, and other priorities that we know are really connected to climate change. We've set goals for this process, you know, to build local climate awareness, empower residents, focus on emission reduction strategies that reduce inequities, and really create a deliverable that's accessible and useful to all stakeholders. One of the ways that we're working on that is we've pulled together Climate Action Plan Advisory Council that's made up of a variety of Baltimore residents that have sort of different interests in sustainability and equity, who are going to be providing us ongoing feedback on how, on the engagement and how that engagement is helping meet our equity goals. We aim to reach a minimum of 6,000 people during this process and to ensure that the population reached is demographically representative of the city. You know, we want to ensure that community priorities shape every part of this process. Like I said, that we make climate change a more accessible issue through strong communication, and that we can move from engagement to empowerment. And so we look forward to hearing more from the other agencies and from the panel and, you know, continuing to work with all of our residents and with the City Council as we move forward to update this plan by June of next year.
Okay, thanks so much for sharing. We're going to move on to the Sustainability Commission.
Good, good morning, Chairman McCray. I'm delighted to be here. I'm Miriam Avens, one of two co-chairs of the Commission, the Sustainability Commission, which was created by City Council to create and oversee the implementation of the Sustainability Plan. So it's really wonderful day to be here and also lovely to see both the current and the past City Council representatives to the Commission, Councilman Dorsey and the current Representative Councilman Porter, Councilwoman Porter. So we're very excited to see this action and also very excited by the current goals that Mayor Scott has let us all know about yesterday. And we're very eager to continue in, Councilman Conway, what you asked for, helping us see this thing through. The Commission's a great place for us to educate ourselves and other people and hold conversations that can be hard to have in other government forums. A number of our Commission members are on the Advisory Council that Ms. McNeely spoke about, and we're definitely looking forward to further action in that. So basically, we're just, I want to take up your time. We're very supportive. We're excited to see this implementation of the Sustainability Plan occurring and excited to see the cooperation between different branches of government. So thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to the Department of Planning.
So this is Lisa McNeely. The Office of Sustainability is part of the Department of Planning. And so on behalf of Director Ryer, the Department of Planning stands by its bill report.
Thank you, Department of Finance.
Good morning, Mara James, the Department of Finance, Legislative and Engagement Lead. We stand by our report. We are supportive, of course, of the Office of Sustainability doing the Climate Action Plan and the greenhouse gas emission inventory and understanding what measures can be outlined in the updated plans to meet these goals. We understand, of course, that actions may require increased investment from the city, and so look forward to partnering with the Office of Sustainability in figuring out what the specific measures are that the city can specifically address and the costs for those to begin planning for implementation of measures and what would be needed for those actions to occur.
Thank you. Last, we're going to go to our last agency, that's our City Solicitors Office.
Hello, Madam Chair. This is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. This is a resolution, so obviously, we approve it for form and legal sufficiency, and we were also given a set of amendments to review. Again, it's a resolution, so any amendments are also approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruley. At this time, Councilman Conway, if you are, if you want to go ahead and introduce your two members from your panel who will be speaking today.
Sure. So we've got two guests today who are really experts in the field, Tom Peterson and Taylor Smith-Hams. Have they been elevated? Yes, I see Taylor and... I don't see Tom. Well, we can, we can begin with Taylor, and if we're able to identify Tom, we can elevate him. Taylor is from Bluewater Baltimore, and I'll allow Taylor to give a little bit more insight on herself. But certainly, Bluewater Baltimore has been a huge advocate for cleaning up the bay and cleaning up the inner harbor. But then also is really, really, really focusing on some of the impacts of climate change and the impacts that it has on the inner harbor. So Taylor, I will hand it off to you, and thank you for attending today.
Thank you, Councilman. And thank you, Committee Chair McCray and members of the committee for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Taylor Smith-Hams, and I'm the Advocacy and Outreach Senior Manager at Bluewater Baltimore. Our mission is to restore the quality of Baltimore's waterways to foster a healthy environment and thriving communities. And we respectfully request your support and expansion of this resolution. The climate crisis poses significant risks to Baltimore's communities, waterways, and environment. From raw sewage backing up into people's homes during heavy rainfall to the urban heat island effect exacerbating asthma and heart failure and increasing energy bills. And the effects of climate change are not felt equally. As a result of systemic disinvestment, Black and Brown communities are more vulnerable to climate impacts than white communities. For example, Broadway East has six times less tree canopy than Roland Park, which can lead to significant temperature differences between these two neighborhoods. And data has shown that predominantly Black neighborhoods are more likely to experience dangerous sewage backups than predominantly white neighborhoods. Baltimore City must take urgent action to mitigate the effects of climate change and increase the city's resilience in the face of this crisis. We appreciate the opportunity this resolution creates to convene city agencies, community members, and other stakeholders on this issue. This resolution makes a necessary call to action and rightly highlights the need for Baltimore City to make transformative changes to the city's core systems to rise to this challenge. No single piece of legislation or city agency can tackle the climate crisis alone. Achieving climate justice requires a community-led holistic effort with an explicit focus on justice and equity. As the City Council considers this resolution and how to advance the vision outlined within it, it should focus on increasing the city's climate ambitions and centering environmental justice. Specifically, the City Council should focus on becoming net zero rather than carbon neutral and move up the timeline to at least 2045. The city should also set interim benchmarks from now through 2045 to increase accountability and ensure the city reaches its longer-term goal. The 3060100 framework announced by the Mayor and the Office of Sustainability yesterday is a great start. It's important to note that net zero does not mean the same thing as zero emissions. Becoming net zero simply means that Baltimore's greenhouse gas emissions are balanced by the amount of emissions the city removes from the atmosphere through carbon sequestration offsets or other mechanisms. By contrast, zero emissions means a hard end to all emissions with no balance sheet or offsets. Zero emissions should be the ultimate goal in order to truly limit the effects of climate change, but well-crafted net zero policies can help cut emissions and build toward that target. The City Council must also center environmental justice in any efforts to address climate change by prioritizing the communities that have historically paid the costs for broader economic development and its associated environmental health impacts. Any efforts to reduce emissions now must happen and focus on reducing pollutants and exposure now in the communities on the front lines of this crisis. In Baltimore, that means prioritizing Black, Brown, low-income, and formerly red-line neighborhoods, which consistently face disparate levels of pollution and exposure to environmental hazards and subsequent health impacts. A 2017 report on asthma in Baltimore from the Environmental Integrity Project found that the black butterfly is bearing the brunt of the city's asthma emergency room visits. There are numerous tools and resources that the city can use to inform decisions about which areas of the city to prioritize in its emissions reductions plans, including the University of Maryland's Environmental Justice Screening Tool and the Biden Administration's Justice 40 Initiative. More information about these tools, as well as our suggested amendments, can be found in our written testimony. If Baltimore City is going to improve environmental health and build strong, resilient communities, it must take ambitious climate action. The goals outlined in this resolution are a good start and can help get Baltimore on a path toward a more sustainable future. We urge a favorable report on 21-0075-R with the suggested strengthening amendments and look forward to providing input on subsequent ordinances to bring this vision to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. We are having a bit of a technical difficulty in elevating Mr. Peterson, I believe. However, we have located him within the attendees list, and what we're going to do is take him off of, make sure that he's able to speak, but this committee, we're not going to be able to see him. But at this time, we're going to go ahead and just give him the opportunity to make his remarks.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Great. Well, thank you so much for inviting me to join you today. And let me just commend all of you for taking this and all of the other steps you have on climate change. Time is of the essence, and that's loud and clear from the resolution. It's also clear from many of the actions you've taken in the past. And unfortunately, that situation is not going to change. It's only going to worsen. So it's really quite critical that you act, you know, in a very timely and effective manner going forward. I wanted to share some thoughts around how that might happen based on the experience that I have had and that my organization has had working in this field in the last two decades. I run the Center for Climate Strategies. It's a national nonprofit organization that has worked inside the United States with many US states and localities, as well as outside the United States with nations in sub-national jurisdictions to try to find solutions to climate change, both climate change mitigation and adaptation. And prior to that time, small world that it is, in a previous life, I worked at the White House Climate Change Task Force with Lisa McNeely. So it is indeed a small world, and it's good to see you again, Lisa. It's been far too long. I wanted to, and also note, that I am an adjunct professor at Johns Hopkins University. I've been at the Energy Policy and Climate Program, as well as the Global Securities Center since 2010, and teach courses on climate change and also work with students, many of whom are actually from the Baltimore area. And if you need any suggestions on folks who would be able to help you, I'd certainly be happy to pass that on. I wanted to, right off the bat, just acknowledge that while we're talking about a resolution addressing climate change mitigation today, and it is a resolution that has identified very clear targets, which are quite critical, there, it is possible that you might want to consider a parallel resolution on adaptation and vulnerability. And while these are a bit different in terms of the metrics, I do think it's possible to assemble a set of numerical goals that would help drive the progress Baltimore makes on climate change adaptation. I think in short, and you've done much of this work already, you might identify the places and the people who are exposed to climate change, those who are most vulnerable, and the actions you want to take to support their needs. And then you need to tally that up so that you have an understanding of the overall level of effort that is required. It not only would help you set goals to drive the programs, but also to support the mobilization of financing that is quite critical for this. And I'm going to circle back to this in a moment, because I think part of the timing issue here that's so critical is the ability to secure federal funding and other available funding just as quickly as possible to support programs. Looking at climate change mitigation, I'm actually going to refer a little bit to some things that we identified through a report that we published in December of last year through the support of the ABLE Foundation, which was looking at a definition of climate change leadership actions and a comparison of the state of Maryland and the state of Massachusetts. But it is much more broadly applicable in terms of identifying those things that really are necessary for a climate change leader or a jurisdiction to be on top of this issue. And I think you've put in place some of the critical components of that in this resolution and in your programs. But I wanted to offer some additional thoughts about areas that you can emphasize and perhaps some ways to achieve them. The first is, with respect to goals, you might want to consider aligning economic and social goals at the same time as you do climate change goals, so that it's clear from the very beginning that you want to integrate these two issues. You want to be able to not only address the climate change issue, but economic recovery needs and social equity needs at the same time. In particular, I think it's advisable to include environmental and economic justice at the beginning of these processes rather than as an afterthought. And so that would be built right into your goals and objectives at the start. Another key thing, and I'm really heartened to hear the description of the process that's been outlined so far, has been the inclusion of a broad array of departments and commissions and offices in this effort, as well as outreach in the community, to communities and to the private sector. You're gifted with a well-staffed sustainability office, but obviously, they can't do this alone. This is going to require solutions that cut across all areas of government and all sectors. It will need to cut across all parts of the business and social community. And this collective effort is going to require quite a bit of support. And it looks like that you have begun that process, but I wanted to just reinforce the importance of cooperation at a broad scale and a whole-of-government approach on this issue. I also wanted to call out the importance of identifying enough programs, enough policies and measures in all of the different sectors and areas of government that it will get the job done and actually reach these goals. A part of that is going to be forecasting your emissions forward to the target periods in the future, so that you have a business-as-usual forecast or baseline, and then looking at the gap between that and the goals that you have. And that's going to tell you how much you have to do that hasn't yet. and the goals that you have. And that's going to tell you how much you have to do that hasn't yet been planned for. We think of this as an alligator with its jaws open, and the top jaw is where emissions are headed, and the bottom jaw is where they need to go. And your job is to close the jaws of that alligator by taking very specific actions in all of these areas. One of the big failures of climate change action planning everywhere, and it has been an issue here in Maryland, has been the failure to accompany that process with the necessary financial and regulatory and program mechanisms for each of those policies and measures so that they can actually implement. So we see many plans that have not implemented. And I think this goes back to an initial point that we have an opportunity before us now to seek federal financing and other sources of financing, including the private sector, to be able to provide funding support to ensure that these programs will actually be implemented and not merely be proposals or pledges that do not result in actions. Time is of the essence here, as well as I think you all are aware, the train will be moving rather quickly in terms of federal funding. So early actions out of the planning process might be actually quite important to be able to seek those funds. The final thing, and I would also say, as a part of this collective process, being able to formulate business and financial solutions is likely to be quite important to be able to provide this support. I think the final thought I would share is just on the measurement side of this. Cutting across all of this is the need to really measure what you are and are not doing already and its future impact, but then measure the impacts of new actions so that you, as a council, and so that the public will be able to know for all of the different policies and measures that are being contemplated, what sort of benefits will result, whether it's greenhouse gas emissions or other community benefits. Also, what are the costs or even the financial savings that are necessary? Those numbers will be very important to seeking financing, but they'll be very important also to guiding planning. I raise this issue because one of the cautionary notes for local government climate action planning really has been a failure to do these kinds of measurements that help you as leaders in this field understand the line item budget effects of each of these actions so that you can manage those budgets and mobilize the necessary funding for their implementation. This is standard fare. It should be attainable through the program you have, but if you need help, there certainly is qualified assistance for that. And thank you so much again for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, and also Ms. Smith-Hams for your remarks today. We are going to move, I'm going to open a floor to committee members for questions. Committee members, please signal or use the raise hand function if you have a question. I'm going to go ahead and start. Yesterday, the mayor announced that the city's updated climate action plan will include a series of targets to achieve one hundred percent carbon neutrality by 2045. For Director McNeely, can you summarize the targets and also the timeline, please?
Yes, thank you. So when Baltimore first set a greenhouse gas emission reduction, it was through the 2012 Climate Action Plan. And what we have, I think what we see in a lot of places is that as time goes on, as you hit different milestones, but as we both know more about the urgency of climate change and as we better understand what are, you know, the efficacy of various steps that we can take, you see cities continuing to be more ambitious in those targets. And so what we did was start with what is an existing target in the Sustainability Plan, which is to hit thirty percent by 2025. And to look at a trajectory, I think Mr. Peterson's analogy of the alligator jaws closing, I think is a really apt one. I think one thing I might want to suggest as well is that we think about some of these things as having a bit of a curve to them. We know that there are steps that we can take that are technically feasible now around energy efficiency, around renewable energy. And so we opted to say, well, we think we'll get to sixty percent by 2030. So we did not give ourselves very much time to get most of the way there. We know that there are other aspects of, and you know, I fully appreciate Ms. Ham's points about zero versus net zero versus carbon neutrality. But for the purposes of this, I'm going to continue to use carbon neutrality until we can, you know, in this instance. But to get to that endpoint, there are some other things that are much more difficult. There are industrial emissions. There are some high heat. There's some uses of high heat that are where we're still looking to best understand what all of our options are. And we know that there are things around transportation that may take us a little bit longer to get there. And so that was why we then looked at 2045 as the date for kind of hitting that sort of net zero or carbon neutral goal. And, you know, which is in line with the Carbon Solutions Now bill that was introduced in Annapolis last year. Does that answer what you were asking?
It did, Director McNeely. I just wanted to make sure, you know, we received the press announcement. We were able to reach out to the administration. I just wanted to make sure that we were outlining it for any members of the public. But it definitely answers my question. Thank you. I'm going to move on to, this question's likely Department of Finance. Also, again, the Office of Sustainability, if you could discuss the potential costs for the city as well as for residents, for businesses, other institutions in the city, for us to achieve carbon neutrality, and how can we ensure that those costs do not disproportionately burden low-income residents?
Chair McCray, did you say that was directed at the Office of Sustainability or the Department of Finance or both of us?
Both of you.
Ms. James, if it's okay, I'll take a running start at this. Because something else that Mr. Peterson said reminded me that I'd like to also share that Mayor Scott last year started a Sustainability and Resiliency Subcabinet, so to the point of having agencies work together on this, that that kind of collaboration is the whole point of that subcabinet. We have six working groups under that: transportation, buildings, waste, heat, flooding and infrastructure, and then climate. And in this case, it's climate planning. And so wanted to highlight that it's in that, that we'll be talking about related issues in all of those working groups and how agencies can work together to speed implementation on this. But in the planning one, we very explicitly invited the Department of Finance. And so Director Sennemy has been at some of those, at least one of our, we've only had two working group meetings so far, but been there to explicitly address some of these issues so that we have, again, you know, some of the best minds in the administration at the table, helping us understand what those costs are. To the point of how will we make sure that the costs don't fall disproportionately? You know, it is a, you know, one of the things we're looking at, we're part of the Urban Sustainability Director, Urban Sustainability Directors Network, so that we have access to a lot of the best practice, the best in industry cities out there so that we can talk to them and also understand, you know, what are the ways to do this? I think that there are a lot of co-benefits to what are in the Climate Action Plan. As we improve energy efficiency, transportation efficiency, we see those savings. But I know that's not the question. I know that you want to know not just in total, but on, you know, on an individual basis, but also, you know, for, you know, that subset of our city who are lower-income or who are already more vulnerable to the impacts. And I think that that is explicitly part of our engagement process that we're looking at is, are there some other metrics? Again, really appreciate the opportunity to hear from Mr. Peterson. One of the things that we expect to add to this process is whether or not energy burden is one way to to measure what we're doing and to see those benefits. This is a measure of how much of a household, it's the number of households whose percentage of income spent on energy is greater than six percent. We know that an extreme burden is over ten percent. We know we have a lot of population, a lot of households in the city who have that heavy energy burden. And we expect to sort of bring those numbers in as we think about that. And so it's a way to do that. You know, I think it's also important to really, you know, think about the, really to think about the benefits, you know, I kind of talked about that in terms of the energy efficiency. But, you know, you may not often hear sustainability professionals talk about cost-benefit analysis, but that is my background. It is the approach I like to try to bring to this. You know, we're very aware of those, of the externalities of the cost that people are feeling in terms of heat, in terms of other actions. And so I think it will be, it will be something that we will be asking more questions about during the engagement process and, you know, look forward to having more conversations about making sure to get into the plan.
Thank you, Director. Mara, what is the Department of Finance have to add to the conversation about the potential costs? As we know, Councilman Conway had another bill yesterday that talked about zero emissions vehicles. And we had a brief analysis on how much it was going to cost. What is the estimate or what does the Department of Finance know about these potential costs for our city, our residents, our businesses?
Yes, thank you for the question. Mara James, Legislature Engagement Lead for the Department of Finance. We are still working on that analysis and understanding those costs. As Director McNeely mentioned, Budget Director Bob Sennemy is a part of the Subcommittee on Sustainability and is a part of those conversations and trying to make sure that the concerns for finance are brought in, but also that we are able to be flexible in thinking about for finance, what are those cost-benefits that Director McNeely mentioned, and how can we bring those into our analysis and understanding that? For finance, I mean, in general, I don't think that it's shocking to hear us say that the city has a lot of a lot of financing issues right now in terms of addressing the increased spending for education with Kerwin going into effect and the recovery from COVID. So as we are going through these efforts to address the climate crisis and understand the importance of that and understand the long-term benefits of taking action, we're also trying to balance the financing concerns for our city. And so we are, in our conversation yesterday about zero emission vehicles, we are supportive of the intent of that, and we understand long-term that there would be fiscal benefits for the city as well as, of course, the environmental and health benefits. But we want to be sure that as we are moving through this and having these conversations that we're thinking through the financing structures and the way that we are operating. So for example, with zero emission vehicles yesterday, the way that we financed those purchases of vehicles and paid debt service over the years and the impact it could have on fleet replacement, just understanding all of those different factors that come into play. As we are a part of these conversations, we're happy to be able to bring those considerations in and then also have other concerns and externalities that Director McNeely referred to, brought in for us to consider as well. For example, the cost savings for zero emissions in terms of possibly lower maintenance and less mileage costs around gas. So those are definitely factors that we are considering as we are going in to this. But of course, we are still facing economic struggles for our budget as we are recovering from COVID and have Kerwin coming in to affect this in fiscal 2023.
Thank you, Ms. James, for your response. We've known about climate change for a long. I know that the Finance Department has a lot going on right now. I know that the city is facing a ton of struggles. I just want to go on the record that this is a huge benefit. I know all of my colleagues here would agree. What I want to see more is more cost analysis in the near future about what this is going to cost the city so we just can prepare. I feel that the Finance Department should have more information available comparable to what other cities are spending because a lot of, a few other cities are actually way ahead of us. So we know how much this may cost us, and I just want to make sure that as you guys are working through it, that you're just keeping in mind that the committee is very interested in those details. I want to just put in a quick follow-up. I know I got a ton of committee members who have questions, but this is going to go back to you, Director McNeely, because you did speak about some of our agencies who are involved. I'm happy that the Finance Department is involved within these conversations and working with the committee and working together. But can you speak to more about how our city agencies are conversing and working together in their efforts to reduce emissions and make Baltimore greener? What other agencies are within the conversation as well?
Yes, thank you, Chair McCray. We, the subcabinet is, I think, at least thirteen different agencies. So we have our buildings, our working group is being led by both Department of General Services and Housing and Community Development. And they are looking at then a friendly, ambitious work plan that would be both, you know, improve, sort of leading by example with city buildings becoming more energy efficiency and expanding renewable energy for the city, but also ways to, you know, improve the energy efficiency and energy use in buildings across the city. Our, the Waste Working Group is led by Department of Public Works. So waste is, you know, an important issue on its own, but it is, waste is around, I think, two to three percent of the city's greenhouse gas inventory as well. We have, Department of Transportation is then obviously a lead on DOT. In each of these working groups, and I don't have, you know, we're still pulling in all of the members. And each of these are multiple agencies who are also attending these groups. So again, with climate, then with climate planning, you know, finance. We also have groups like, you know, we have the Parking Authority involved. And, you know, we've been including the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, among others. With heat and flooding, again, we have a range of, this is when we're looking more at the impacts. We have Health Office of Emergency Management involved in both of those, as well as many of the other agencies that, whose work overlaps this. And we're looking to, you know, continue to sort of forge new, you know, collaborative initiatives as we work forward on this. If I can also add, you know, we are not a solitary actor on this. And so when we talk about the costs and the benefits, it does matter what the state does. It matters what happens at the federal government level. And so the Office of Sustainability has been a part of the Maryland Commission on Climate Change for several years. And, you know, there are, there is data in those plans, there are data in those plans around some of those larger costs, some of which may not be borne directly by the city or by an individual business or even homeowner here that looks at what the investment needs to be, but also then hopefully, you know, want to keep making sure that we are aware of, you know, the benefits that we'll be seeing as well.
Director, thanks so much for speaking about the collaborative approach. It's something that I'm excited to hear about, and thanks for also adding the note again about the cost benefits and just reminding us that this is not just on the city. We are going to have to work collaboratively with our state partners and our federal partners to see this through as well. So thanks for adding that in. I'm going to move to, I'm going to move to Councilman Conway for questions at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I really think you had really good questions. I want to sort of tag along and follow up on one of them because the way that I've been thinking about this as of late has been how to find opportunities where we have to spend money either way. Now, there are a couple of bills that I've already put out there, of course, including this one. There's the other one for our EV vehicles. We know that we replace our vehicles on average every seven years. We know that's going to happen, and that presents an opportunity to significantly reduce our carbon footprint by replacing them with EV vehicles. Now, of course, there are questions about the expense and the relative benefit. But I think that, I thought, was a really, really, really great opportunity for the city to find a way to reduce its carbon footprint. What's more, it's also part of the plan, the Sustainability Plan that we put forward. So once again, it's one of those opportunities where we put out this plan and we just got to implement it. Um, so once again, it's one of those opportunities where we put out this plan and we just got to implement it. You know, we, we're, we're thinking about the right things. It's a matter of doing it. Um, so that's one opportunity. I think also the, the, the other bill I put forward, uh, the Cool Roofs Bill, um, realizing that, um, on, on, for many of our roofs, many of our, many of our row homes, those roofs last 10 years. So every 10 years, we're replacing roofs. Um, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm near that on, on, on my roof. Um, so, you know, when we think about the fact within the next 10 years, many of the homes in Baltimore will have to replace their roofs. If we can replace them with cool roofs at little to no expense to them, that prevents, that presents a huge opportunity once again to reduce our carbon footprint by ever so slightly reducing their, um, uh, energy usage, uh, for each home, even if it's 1% or 5%, hopefully it's more than that. But nonetheless, 5%, 5% across, you know, however many thousand, uh, row homes presents a strong opportunity for us to reduce our carbon footprint for the city. Um, I, I'm really trying to think of more opportunities like that for us where we have to do it anyway. Uh, I'm thinking about, we, we also have another great plan where, where we've endeavored to reach a 40% tree canopy. I used to run a tree organization, so I know this stuff like the back of my hand. Uh, we're, we're trying to reach a 40% tree canopy, yet we deal with the impacts of stormwater every day. And we know that trees are one of the best ways to, uh, to mitigate the impacts, uh, the impacts of stormwater. Uh, they absorb a lot of stormwater, which was, uh, reduces the amount of stormwater that goes into our stormwater systems and results in sewage backups. Um, so if we want to reduce our, one, carbon footprint by absorbing carbon through trees, but then also reduce the impacts of stormwater, trees are a huge opportunity for the city. How can we find more opportunities to plant trees, to better our parks, uh, to create more shade so that more folks spend more time outside? There, there are many benefits that come to these things, but, um, it's really about being smart about where we spend our next dollar. And I, I'm, I'm really curious, um, and this goes to sustainability. Um, when we think about some of these opportunities, where are some of the low, low-hanging fruit like those that I've put forward? And that, you know, the council is considering now that we should be thinking about where, of course, they cost, but we have to spend the money anyway.
Yes, thank you for that. And I, I think the, you know, I just want to expand, um, um, you know, that's an excellent question. And, and this is, um, you know, there are, um, you know, any kind of climate action plan, you know, part of one. Sorry, let me just back up. I had, you raised, you triggered several different thoughts for me to share and I tried to share them all at once. So let me take a step back. You know, when we described that engagement process that we're doing, part of the reason we talked about wanting to make that kind of accessible and, and, and easy to understand is because many climate action plans very quickly start running to, I, I've got ours pulled up. You know, our current one is 88 pages. Um, you know, it's very dense. Uh, you can have a lot of conversations about a lot of, uh, really, um, sort of interwoven strategies where you might want to, you know, it's, there's whether it's either you want to do them sequentially or whether, you know, one has to happen, um, before another one can happen. And, um, you know, we, um, you know, cool, um, so trying to sort of, um, um, identify sort of a lot of key ways to, to, to work on that are really, are really important. So to, to start with the Cool Roofs one that you're mentioning, you know, what's really interesting about that one is that it is both a, something that cools neighborhoods, but then hopefully also reduces energy bills. And so that, that kind of dual benefit is something that we really, um, want to work towards. I think that, you know, one area that, um, um, our office has also been working on that I haven't had a chance to share yet is community resiliency. And I think this is one of those areas. So, um, we have a Community Resiliency Hub program that is, um, frankly internationally known. Um, right now, we have 15, uh, community-based organizations who have stepped up to say we, uh, uh, want to partner with the city and to do more in our neighborhoods to help everyone be better prepared to be more resilient. Um, we are working with those groups and, and continuing to identify new funding sources to, uh, provide training, you know, emergency management-related training, supplies, but also energy efficiency upgrades and solar and battery storage systems, sort of microgrids on these organizations so that if there are power outages, whether it's in a, you know, a small storm or some sort of larger disaster, they can, um, um, sort of be, um, still be open and available to their community. You know, part of that has also led us to be thinking about a broader heat strategy so that it's a matter of, um, of thinking, you know, taking the Code Red Program that the Health Department and the Office of Emergency Management have, you know, really been running, um, you know, in a, in a very sort of innovative way. We were one of the first cities, I think, to have a Code Red program. But to take that into say, as it's getting hotter, as we know more about our sort of responsibility to our residents to pay more attend, you know, to, to, to provide more, not only heat mitigation, you know, cooling centers, uh, when it's really hot or other resources, um, on the, during those heat waves, but also this long-term, um, sort of mitigation where we, um, you know, redouble efforts, um, of Tree Baltimore and the Forestry Department on planting trees and on maintenance and on other green space. And so bringing that kind of together. So, um, you know, with this community resiliency approach, we've done maps, you know, where we're trying to look and identify those areas, uh, uh, where we have, um, more need to, to sort of provide resources and are, are looking to continue to do that work.
Thank you. And, um, I, I think that, that's a great point. I think there's a lot there. Um, the, as you were talking, you, you got me really thinking about, um, some of what Tom Peterson was alluding to. Um, with thinking about some of the, um, adaptation of vulnerability approaches, um, and what that can mean, knowing that the impacts of climate change will affect our economy. Uh, it'll affect our shopping areas. It'll affect our downtown. People frequently walk around outside and as it gets hotter, you're going to see less people do so. So thinking forward about what we can do to keep people visiting Baltimore, spending time outdoors in Baltimore, uh, and what that looks like. And I'm not sure what that looks like yet, but once again, it's something that we're going to have to do, um, because it helps the city. It brings, um, tax dollars here. It, it, it brings visitors to the city. It helps people spend money in the city and it's a no-brainer in many ways. So I, I think it's a great idea. Um, when you think about the resiliency hubs, of course, in our neighborhoods, but also thinking about how it affects our businesses and supports, uh, our businesses in Baltimore. The other question I have, um, you know, the, the Office of Sustainability has done a phenomenal job, um, working with the communities, uh, working with neighborhoods to think about, um, generally plans. I mean, the Planning Department is phenomenal at this, but, um, making sure that we get, um, really, really, really good insights from community and, and sort of working the ground up and building our plans. Um, one, one of the things I'm really curious about, um, and, um, Tom Peterson alluded to this. How do we think about, um, environmental justice? How do we think about our goals for environmental justice? How do we know whether or not we're succeeding? Is it just a matter of process or can we definitively say or measure by any means, um, the success out of our outcomes for environmental justice? How, how, what does that look like to us?
Um, so, you know, that's an excellent question. Um, and having metrics or equity metrics is, is something that we've been looking at since we were developing the Sustainability Plan. Um, if you look, each chapter in it has metrics. Um, we don't call out some as equity metrics versus others, but we always try, we're trying to focus on, um, a lot of them are focused on sort of where we either see improvements in outcomes. So not just looking at a city, um, uh, you know, a, a total for the city, but looking at it, uh, in a more neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis, uh, either in the outputs of what we do or sort of of the outcomes. Um, it is still of, an area where, um, there is more work to be done to identify those. Um, it is why, uh, you may hear me talk about, uh, I know my staff, I, they're tired of me talking about energy burden. They're not tired of me talking about energy burden, but they hear me talk about it a lot. I think that's one very clear one, um, that we have. Um, and that is something that's in our most recent annual report, um, where we talk about sort of data on that for the Baltimore city and, and, and something that we want to keep measuring. Um, you know, in terms of, of understanding, um, you know, environmental justice, I mean, you know, I'm here today to answer the questions, um, and, and, you know, you've had panelists. Um, you know, at, at some level, it's not necessarily, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm more interested in what our community says about that. And that is what we hope to hear through the engagement process. You know, one thing, if I can do, uh, a bit of a plug, the Commission on Sustainability is meeting tonight from four to six. And in that four to five timeframe, we're going to be talking more about the engagement process for the Climate Action Plan update, um, and hearing from a panel about exactly this issue. And, and these are, these are where we, uh, think these conversations need to happen is out in the community, um, and, and continuing to hear more. Um, Ava, uh, Richardson, our Sustainability Manager is on the call, as is Aubrey Girm, who's our Climate Resilience Planner. She's a, an attendee. And maybe one of them can add in a link to the commission meeting into the chat or the Q and A so that it's easily accessible for anybody who is, um, listening in today. I think that's going to be a really, uh, good conversation.
Thank you, Lisa, and I thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and Director. Um, thanks for the plug. I'm looking forward to seeing someone put further information within the chat about the meeting from four to six. Um, we're going to move to Councilman Dorsey at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I guess I, I have a couple of responses to the bill sponsor's thoughts, uh, just to be a part of this dialogue here. Um, you know, in asking about the ways and considering the ways in which we can do better in those cases where we are already, you know, it's necessary for us to spend. There are ways in which the city is literally legally obligated to spend money in which we are not realizing the full potential for benefits of that spending. First and foremost, I think the most obvious one and one that I've discussed with DPW and DOT on an annual basis since I took office is our MS4 permits, our MS4 program. Um, we spend money, uh, is often kind of to dubious benefit. Uh, in, in ways that meet the bare minimum requirement of that MS4, of those MS4 standards. Um, and, and some, and in many ways debatable in whether they are truly beneficial at all. Many of our stream restoration projects have come under scrutiny for that purpose, but we continue to also spend money to, to do street sweeping, uh, out of that MS4 money instead, and, and, and repeatedly burning fossil fuels in order to execute it, um, which it works against these climate goals. Um, while at the same time, um, the, when I checked at the most recent round of MS4 projects being just, uh, proposed by DPW, there was not a single project proposed for impermeable surface removal. Uh, I know that the only projects proposed in my district were ones that advanced no secondary benefit, no community benefits whatsoever. So there are case, and particularly in the case of using MS4 money to remove impermeable surface, uh, addresses not only, uh, structurally, infrastructurally, the, the, the stormwater issue that is at the base of MS4, but also has the ben- benefit of, um, of, of improving heat island effect. And sec- and, and, and I think very importantly, as a community-based benefit, um, that, that is necessary all around the city is reducing the oversized, um, the, the, the adverse impacts of oversized roads that we have all over the city. Our streets are admittedly by DOT oversized, um, and, and can do with a significant extent to rightsizing, uh, in order to reduce crashes and dangers and, and, and shift our car culture in ways that is then secondarily, um, beneficial to our, uh, goal of shifting mode to get more and more people out of cars, um, which, uh, making it safer for everybody is kind of essential to that. So, you know, I, I hope that the Planning Department and the Office of Sustainability can take a greater role in, um, in, in, in holding DPW and DOT, uh, to, to a standard of use, um, and collaboration in the use of those funds that really advances as many objectives as possible. Again, we are required to spend that money. It's incumbent upon us to make it, uh, bring about as great a benefit as possible. The other thing that I think is, um, really important is for us to, uh, be really cognizant about the ways in which our city law is preventing us act, you know, uh, from, from doing what is best. Um, several years ago, uh, there was a project from UC Berkeley called Cool Climate that analyzed the entire country, uh, at a zip code level, um, for its per-household carbon footprint. And, um, the 21214 zip code, uh, which is, I believe, all but a tiny little sliver in my district, there being a very, very small piece of it in District Two, um, is the highest carbon footprint of any zip code in Baltimore City per household. And the number one driving factor behind that is the housing stock itself. And this is not merely that these are old houses that are poorly insulated or too big and require, uh, require, you know, excess heating and fuel consumption for that, but that the houses themselves are built in a way that make exceptionally poor utilization of available land. Effectively, our land use policy driving the, the, these kind of neighborhoods into this kind of existence um, is working at, at odds with climate goals. And the only way to change that is to reform our zone, zoning code to allow for a better, more sustainable, resilient, denser use of that land presently. And to my point, presently, we have laws on the books that are preventing us wholesale from making, uh, climate, um, and environmental, um, advancement. Um, and I guess the last thought I have is that we as a city, at the same time that we see the value in making these broad stroke kind of, um, environmental goals for 2030, 2050, 2045, whatever the years are, um, for, for general carbon neutrality, um, and, and things like this, we don't have any of the smaller goals in place, uh, or so, so certain of the other smaller goals in place that I think, uh, give us, um, tangible benchmarks. We have, for example, no, um, mode share goals for the city. We have no goals for saying that by a certain date, we want X percentage of the population to be reliant on cycling and walking and no associated, uh, then no, no associated, um, uh, goals on how to exactly achieve that, uh, kind of as a subset of how we achieve greater climate goals. Um, so I, I, I just hope that, that, um, planning and sustainability and all of us can, can help to, uh, to, to bring about these kind of changes. Thank you.
Thank you. As always, Councilman Dorsey, we love to hear your thoughts. I want to make sure that we're, um, being centered within this conversation as well. And then we're, while we have all of our agency representatives here, that Councilman Conway has called that we are asking targeted questions, um, as well as making remarks. Um, I want to welcome Councilmen, members of, additional members of the committee. Councilman Schleifer has joined us as well as Councilman Torrance, um, actually joined us a while ago. So I want to make sure that everyone knows that they are present at this time. Are there any additional committee members? Um, and my grid is a little small, but are there any additional committee members who have questions at this time? Um, or who want to add to this conversation briefly? And seeing and hearing none, again, I'm on a small grid, so wait if you have a, okay, got it. Councilman, I see you.
Okay. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to commend the, um, Sustainability, uh, Commission for, and, uh, Councilman Conway for bringing this topic forward. I think that, you know, when we think about climate change in Baltimore, we want to be forward-thinking, we want to be innovative, and we also want to really make it, um, really tangible for, for, um, for, for everyday people living in Baltimore City. Um, that's one of the, the items that I had pressed the, you know, Sustainability Co., um, Commission about how, how we can make this more tangible. about how, how we can make this more tangible to people in Baltimore. So can you comment on the communication strategies used for really pushing this initiative forward to, to the communities?
Yeah, so this is again Lisa McNeely. You know, we have, we're, we're just poised to launch many of the engagement strategies that we have identified to do. We have been very fortunate to have a mix, not only some general funds to help us in this process, but also have attracted grant funding to help us in this process so that we are able to have, you know, a, to be able to, to not just sort of be prepared to go out and talk to community members, but as we engage them in any depth, to be able to compensate people for their time. So part of what our Advisory Council is doing is helping us craft the whole suite of things that we're going to be doing. So we'll hear some more about it at tonight's Commission meeting, and then we'll be able to talk more about that later. You know, one of the things that our community engagement fellow and our Climate Resilience Planner have come up with is sort of a, a meeting in a box as well. So it's not just going to be things that our office is going to leave. We're going to hope that others can be out, helping us have these conversations. And just want to see if, sorry, Councilman.
And no, no worries, Lisa. And that's very helpful. I knew all of that, but I want the public to really understand, like, that we are making a push to really communicate tangible benchmarks and tangible, like, outcomes from, from this initiative and make it, make it actionable for everyday life. That's one of the critiques that I heard, you know, from the plastic bag van. Like, I mean, it's, it's some of the critiques. I want, you know, the, the citizens of Baltimore know that we are, we're, not only are we handling immediate issues such as public safety, we are forward-thinking to issues that are going to impact our generations 10 to 20 years to come. And we need to be, we need to be forward-thinking about that. And that's the sole purpose of what the Sustainability Commission is doing. So again, commend you and the Sustainability Commission and Councilman Conway for bringing this very important topic to the forefront.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. I do want to just uplift before we move to Councilmember Locke that a link has been placed within the chat function for the Commission on Sustainability's meeting from four to six today. I also want to just note, that's going to be via Webex. If anyone needs additional information and you have access to the internet, you can look at our Office of Sustainability's page for updates at baltimoresustainability.org. So I want to make sure that people know where to go to see this information as well. Councilman Ballack.
Yes, thank you, Chair McCray. Appreciate you holding this hearing. And also want to, you know, lift up Councilman Conway for this very timely piece. I know as both fathers, along with Councilman Torrance, you know, we think about the future of our city. And so it's very timely, really think about what the Sustainability Commission is doing. And just being very thoughtful in terms of what we do now. And even Ekinwood, Councilman Porter, just mentioned in terms of not only working on the short term, but also the long-term pieces. So again, this is something that's very near, dear to my heart, and so very thankful to have this opportunity today. So thank you again.
Thank you for adding that comment. Before we move to public testimony and to see if any additional members have questions, I did want to see if somebody could take a stab at this, whether this is our commission members with the Office of Sustainability. Can you speak to what the potential impacts of a 1.5 Celsius global increase could look like for Baltimore City? And how much worse those impacts could be if, say, there was a two degree Celsius increase as well?
So thank you, Chair McCray. So this also gives me an opportunity to mention that that our office also prepares and manages our disaster preparedness plan, which is where we also plan for climate impacts. And I think that, you know, we have, you know, a mix of sort of some predictions in there. We last updated that DP3, as we call it, in 2018. And so, you know, we have not been, and we are working to update it by 2023. It's required by FEMA to be done every five years. And, and just as an aside, the engagement that we're doing, when I talk about it for the Climate Action Plan, will also feed into the prioritization of projects within this plan as well. We just are, didn't want people to have to sort of know which plan there might be given comments on that we're combining them together. So that plan, we have not had the benefit of the most recent IPC science in that. But I do, we do know that we are, in general, what we, what the science tells us about the impacts for Baltimore are that our, our, our biggest impacts are extreme heat and extreme cold. It is flooding of all kinds. And to a certain extent, also sort of wind events, whether it's a risk of a hurricane or the, the straight line winds. So hurricanes are circular winds, the straight line winds of the derecho, like we saw in Iowa a couple of years ago, and that we saw in the city in 2012, I believe. The science is telling us that, that the riverine flooding or the flooding driven by rainfall and maybe, you know, by the capacity of our stormwater system, that that's going to increase faster than sea level rise. We know it's an issue because it's, it was, we heard earlier, we are both seeing sea level rise and also a certain amount of subsidence, dropping of the land. But we are seeing the kinds of increased microburst intense precipitation that have, you know, that have caused us to see the floods like in 2018 in Frederick Avenue, the, the very small microburst in 2019 around Fells Point that saw several feet of flooding. And the, but also the kinds of flooding that we see on a regular basis at 35th and Helen. And so, you know, we're looking at all of those kinds of, of sort of sea level rise or coastal flooding, the riverine or sort of that, you know, when the Jones Falls rises, that kind of flooding, but also that broader urban flooding that, that can happens, that happens across the city when, you know, we see flooding in streets or we see, you know, stormwater systems that, that, that can't handle that amount of rainfall. But we know that those extreme weather events also correspond to extreme cold. And, and that has its own impacts. We saw this weekend that, you know, the, it's not just that heat went out, but that we had, you know, water main burst or water lines burst. And, and that in one instance, that actually even got into the natural gas lines and then causing those kinds of, of problems. So we know that those impacts are real. We know that, you know, the science is telling us that that 1.5 degree increase, you know, that, that we may be seeing, you know, we may, you know, we may, it may be almost too late for us to avoid most of those. You know, I think that we take them all seriously. And there is some range of, of impacts on estimates of what those impacts will be. The science is, is still coming to the point where it can be, you know, can talk about Baltimore versus Maryland or Maryland versus the mid-Atlantic region on some of these. But we, you know, so that while we are planning for that, we, we are trying to plan on both fronts because of that. Because the uncertainty doesn't stop us. It just means that, you know, the precise answers are, you know, hopefully we'll never know. Hopefully we won't know what those impacts are. You know, and, but this is also, you know, a time, again, to just reiterate how important it is to note that these impacts are not felt equally. You know, the whole range, there, there are both the actual vulnerability, as we've talked about with the urban heat island effect, that it is hotter in areas that have seen less investment from the city for systemic reasons. But also because those, those, there is often then an overlap in the populations who are more vulnerable sort of socially or economically, whether it's people who have mobility issues, who can't leave their house to get to a cooling center. Or people whose houses don't have enough equity in them or to, to be able to afford the kinds of improvements to, to stay cooler at home or whose landlords aren't, are, don't make those investments. But also, you know, when we think about just even, you know, ability to evacuate from a city if we had, you know, a major hurricane hit, you know, no matter how bad it is, whether it's just a, you know, a non-climate change driven one or, or some of the ones that we, we see now that maybe are bigger, stronger, warmer, drop more water on them. You know, I remember reading about, you know, after the hurricane that hit New Orleans, there was a study done that, that talked about how the impact of that was worse because it, the hurricane hit at the end of the month. And that there were, that there were so many people who did not have savings. They did not, they couldn't come up with a few hundred dollars that would be needed maybe to, to evacuate the city safely. And that part of that was because it was at the end of the month. It was close, you know, they were further away from their payday and, and the impact that that can have. And so we, these are the kinds of things that we tried to keep for at mind, try to keep it front of mind. And, and, you know, like I said, try to keep, make sure that we know what the science is. But, you know, we're hoping we don't have to know exactly what those impacts are going to be, but we're planning for the worst.
Director, this is very important for me to just make sure that that was on the record about what the change in temperature can do to the city and also this area. We're going to move into public testimony at this time. The committee staff is now going to call on members of the public who wish to testify on the resolution. Members of the public, you will have two minutes each to provide your testimony. And for those who are signed in using a computer, we just ask that you use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify, and we'll start with you. Next, we're going to go through all of the users who have called into the hearing. Attendees who called in who cannot be identified by name, you will be unmuted by our committee staff one by one. You will hear two beeps when you are unmuted. And if you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If a caller does not want to provide testimony, you simply need to state that after the two beeps. If a speaker is inaudible, you will be directed to call back. And Matt Peterson, Matthew Peterson is going to, Matt Peters, I apologize. Our staff committee is going to take over for the public testimony at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looks like we have Harry Gregory first. Mr. Gregory, you're unmuted.
I am unmuted, okay. I want to thank you all for your hard work. It's hard to listen to the reality that you're planning for, knowing that it's, it's going to be harder than any of us want it to be. I want to commend Taylor Harris-Smith for emphasizing real zero and add to your list of worries that temperature goals and emission goals are misleading. Real zero is not where your work ends because concentrations have already been unsafe for decades. And as emissions decline, we are still raising the unsafe levels that drive the ecological damage. The damage will continue as long as the greenhouse gas levels are unsafe. So the, the timeline that you need to be considering is, I know you're looking at, at carbon neutral, then net zero, then real zero. But beyond that, you have to be considering the safe levels because the ecological damage will be there even after you hit zero emissions. I, I don't know how we're going to manage all of these things, but I, I know that you can't just think of your work here in Baltimore. You also have to push the state and federal government to do their part because emissions in the atmosphere affect everyone everywhere in the world. And you have to probably push the UN or some global organization to let them know that you're taking this seriously also. Thank you all. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Next, we have Owen S. Andrews.
Thank you, Owen Silverman-Andrews, rank and file member of the Baltimore City Green Party. The concepts of carbon neutrality and carbon pricing seek to solve a problem caused by the market-based model and every person or corporation for themselves mentality by giving the patient more of the poison that put them in critical condition to begin with. Instead of more of the, this bitter and ineffective medicine that puts on an artificial price for corporations' right to pollute and accelerate the climate crisis, we need to pivot away from the individualist toolkit to the collectivist toolkit needed to substantively address our collective crisis. If we can't implement carbon pricing well in California at, at the state level, why would it be something that could be implemented well in Baltimore at the municipal or county level? What does this pivot mean practically? Let's talk about the policies cities are implementing that address the root causes of our environmental racism and climate crisis. Minneapolis has successfully implemented cumulative impact analysis that takes into account the climate impact of all public proposed building. Cities and counties in Washington State and New Jersey and elsewhere are moving to ban all new fossil fuel infrastructure. Instead of setting up an artificial market, which is not the wheelhouse of municipal government, use the environmental and zoning renewal processes currently at your disposal to take direct action. Listening to this hearing, I am struck by, on the one hand, council members aspiring to pick the low-hanging fruit while the tree is dying. And on the other hand, council members aspiring for systemic legislation without building or maintaining, for that matter, the coalitions needed to bring system change to fruition. In conclusion, we all must do better, but those with more power much do much, much, much better. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephen Leas.
Hello, thank you. I want to thank Committee Chair McCray and members of the committee. My name is Stephen Leas. I'm the political co-lead with Centerless Movement Baltimore, as well as a coordinator for Centerless Movement Maryland. We are a youth-led movement fighting for a Green New Deal to create millions of jobs, fighting the climate crisis while prioritizing frontline communities, testifying in favor of global warming solutions, Carbon Neutral City with amendments. Want to thank Councilman Conway for his leadership in drafting the bill and the Office of Sustainability for their work with the Sustainability Plan. Many of our youth members are terrified about the climate crisis that is already unfolding before our eyes. Fires ravage forests at alarming, alarming rates and destroy entire towns in California and Colorado, worsened by warming and droughts. Here on the East Coast, flooding, record-breaking storms, unsettling weather patterns are raising alarm bells. The risk of increasingly powerful hurricanes and superstorms grows each year. As we approach the third year of a taxing pandemic, we should remember that new infectious diseases will become more common as warming worsens. As permafrost thaws, there is even a risk of ancient diseases being released that we have no immunity to that are frozen in the permafrost from before humans existed. The implications are frightening. The climate crisis disproportionately impacts young people who will be forced to try to survive in a world in which the livable ecosystem has been irreparably harmed. Low-income communities and people of color are disproportionately affected as well. And, excuse me, in Baltimore, the heat island effect worsens the direct impact of warming on communities as was recently discussed in last week's hearing on green roofs and, as well as today. These are dangers we see every day, having only experienced one degree of warming. We are currently on track to reach three degrees Celsius or more, the consequences of which are dire. Unfortunately, action has been delayed, fallen upon deaf ears, co-opted by industries offering false solutions for profit. The recent movie Don't Look Up satirizes climate delay and the fact that we are risking our own extinction because businesses, governments, and the media minimize the threat. Its immense popularity, the movie, indicates that the public resonates with the message and that we need climate action now and that the usual excuses will not work any longer. We can still prevent warming below 1.5 degrees Celsius. While the climate crisis is the biggest existential threat of our generation, it is also the biggest opportunity. While the climate crisis is the biggest existential threat of our generation, it is also the biggest opportunity. In the Sunrise Movement, we are fighting for the Green New Deal, a sweeping federal resolution that outlines a rapid transition to reduce greenhouse gases, asserting that it is vital to guarantee economic rights during a systemic transition and that frontline communities left out of the original New Deal must be prioritized. We can guarantee good jobs in the green economy and solar roof, energy on rooftops, energy efficiency retrofits and low-income communities to reduce building emissions and energy burden and sustainable urban ag, zero waste and the care economy. We can slash emissions by ending trash incineration, coal exports, the burning of natural gas, oil and gasoline. We can guarantee the right to housing and healthcare. We can empower communities through the green transition to have a greater collaboration with the city and democratic input into the economy. Baltimore can lead the way towards a truly green and just economy by passing the Carbon Neutral Cities Resolution. We urge the council to vote in favor of this bill and to adopt additional language that guarantees economic rights during the green transition, such as the right to healthcare, housing and the right to good union jobs. We also urge the council to adopt J40 language the Biden administration is adopting, whereby 40% of benefits climate, of climate spending go towards frontline and marginalized communities. We also support Blue Water Baltimore's amendment to use net zero language instead of carbon neutral language, so that all direct emissions that can be reduced are reduced. We also propose that the council adopts language either in this resolution-
We definitely appreciate your remarks. Can you close out at this time? Thank you.
Sure, I'm on the last couple, last part. Either in this resolution or another vehicle to plan a transition to true zero emissions, there's an alarming trend in some corners of the policy world to adopt the questionable solutions that are knocked back by science, such as carbon capture technology and an over-reliance on carbon offsets. These are proposed by the fossil fuel industry's most responsible for the problem, but have a history of holding real action hostage through misinformation campaigns, scaling down the fossil fuel industry and other polluting industries is what will work. We also urge the council to consider more ambitious interval targets. The Sustainability Plan identifies better targets, but consider that in Montgomery County, the official goal is 100% greenhouse gas reductions by 2035. If Baltimore and Montgomery County both set and achieve truly ambitious climate goals, our city and our state will be a leader on the world stage for climate action. All it takes is political will and a commitment to our future. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder for everyone, please limit yourself to two minutes for your testimony. Next, we have Elad Fernberg.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all. My name is Elad Fernberg. I'm with Energy Justice Network and the Clean Air Baltimore Coalition. And I'd just like to make a couple of points. So one is that the, the problem with carbon neutrality by 2050 or 2045 is that 20, no, 2050 or 2045 is too far off and it gives local polluters a free pass to continue polluting while questionably offsetting those emissions elsewhere in the globe, often with problematic and sketchy offset schemes, you know, as other speakers have, have mentioned. One real solution that we've been advocating for would be to end incineration and the Vicinity Energy Downtown District Heating System that is pouring pollutants into Baltimore's air. Their steam loop provides steam heat by burning natural gas and using steam from Wheelabrator's trash incinerator. Wheelabrator and Vicinity are responsible for a combined 48% of the city's industrial greenhouse gas emissions. And that is one of our central goals, is to shut down the incinerator, which not only pollutes the air and contributes to the climate crisis, but also causes elevated disease levels in the communities that are disproportionately affected around the incinerator, causing the highest rates of asthma and cancers in, in those citizens. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we have Andrew Hind.
Yes, hello. Thank you for letting me speak this morning. I definitely support the bill and I support the testimony just now given and also by, by Stephen with, by Stephen Lees. So, yeah, I support the bill, support the amendments, and, and I just want to urge city government to start taking action. So we need to close Bresco now. We need to start, we need to start building a composting facility now. We need to make plans to switch the steam loop to sustainable energy now. We need to start making those plans now. We need to get somebody working on the Community Choice, Choice Energy Bill that was passed by Maryland last year and figure out how we can employ a lot of people here putting rooftop solar on and make electricity virtually very low cost for all the citizens of this city. We can start doing that now. The bill was passed last year. So I urge everybody to start doing things now. Really, I mean, until we start actually reducing emissions and taking actions, eliminating the car culture, as Councilman Dorsey, you know, so wonderfully reminds us, reminds you all about. So I would urge you to, to start the actions now. And also, there's a lot of legislation going to be going before the state legislature related to the climate this year. The city delegation needs to, the city government needs to step up and, and aggressively support the legislation that will benefit the city. One of the bills is a bill to stop subsidizing dirty energy sources. And the city hosts one of those very dirty energy sources that is harming, harming its citizens. So I think the, the, the entire city government, the Sustainability Office, the mayor and the city council should certainly very actively support that bill. There is going to be, I think there's a bill about a, a Rights of Nature Amendment for the state of Maryland. The city, the city, the city, Baltimore city residents deserve that amendment. I, I don't know how else to, to say that. You know, we, we have all kinds of, the people who, who, who grew up in this city are faced with all kinds of violence. We need to reduce the environmental violence and that will, I believe, have a, have a, a, a co-benefit on the other violence that we're, that we're trying to deal with. So please, just, thank you for the, thank you for the bill and the amendment, but please start taking action now and please speak up for us with the legislation, the environmental legislation that's going before the general session this year. So thanks for letting me testify. I'm done.
Thank you. Next, we have Julieta Rodrigo.
Hi, good morning. How's the audio?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Good morning, Honorable Counsel and everybody on the line. My name is Julieta Rodrigo. I'm the Urban and Community Resilience Manager at the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. Part of my job is to engage with local policies that protect the health of the people and the environment around the Chesapeake Bay, and that includes Baltimore. I'm here today to applaud the effort from all of the agencies, departments and council members to guide the city of Baltimore to a more resilient future. As an organization, we urge a favorable recommendation from the committee with an amendment to pass a net zero resolution by 2045, as well as additions to equity language. First, we recommend that the language of the resolution be changed from carbon neutral by 2050 to net zero by 2045. This change in date aligns Baltimore with Maryland's overall state goals. In addition to positioning the city more favorably for state funding, this change would also enable Baltimore to be a climate leader among US municipalities. The change from carbon neutral to net zero is also significant. A carbon neutral approach does not require a reduction in emissions. Rather, it commits to not increasing carbon emissions from current levels and relying on carbon offsets to achieve most of the reductions. Net zero itself is a stronger policy because it requires reducing emissions to the lowest amount possible and using offsets as a last resort. This is going to lead us to have a cleaner bay and a healthier population. Net zero is also aligned with the goals and language within the Paris Agreement and is a plan supported by the United States. We also ask for an amendment to increase equity language within the resolution. Whenever we incorporate plans to reduce emissions, it's imperative that these initiatives be implemented equitably with respect to all the neighborhoods and communities that have historically borne the brunt of pollution and the, the associated health impacts. So we encourage all members of the council to vote in support of this bill. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Madam Chair, it looks like that is it for public testimony.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. That concludes public testimony on Resolution 21-0075R. For, there were three amendments that were emailed to council members. We all should have received the package at 9:52 AM. Are there any questions or concerns about the amendments at this time? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion to move the amendments?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Conway? I'm sorry, who was the second?
Bullock.
Okay, second by Bullock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion has passed. Is there a motion to recommend the resolution favorably? And bear with me just, bear with me just a few moments, guys. We want to, we want, and before we vote on the bill, we're actually going to open back up public testimony. It looks like there were two additional attendees who wanted to testify. So committee members, thank you for your patience. We want to make sure that we're letting everyone within the public who wanted to add comment, to add any comments, that they're able to do so. So we're going to cycle back and then we're going to move the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, we have Dante Swinton.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. There we go. Okay, great. Yeah, so I appreciate folks discussing this bill today. I think it's really important to underscore the benefits of going in this direction. I know there was conversation about financing, but if we don't actually invest in a climate just future, then we're going to be in a larger issue down the road. Someone had already mentioned the need to move on from the incinerator, which is clearly a critical piece of this. The facility emits enough CO2 to equal the emissions of 141,000 cars every year, and that is very considerable. But also, I think we need to really make sure this is looked at from an intersectional standpoint of not only climate justice, but economic justice for this city. There is environmental violence, there's obviously, it's ongoing physical violence in the city, but the provision of jobs and living wage jobs at that are a critical piece to making Baltimore a better place. So if we're actually going to spend more money investing in a climate just future, then now we're going to be able to tackle issues that have been long plaguing this city. And for whatever reason, there's always that disconnect when we're talking environmentalism, environmental justice and jobs. And so having these conversations, this needs to be highlighted in this bill and any other related bills, that we have to be more aggressive about tackling these issues because these are some of the fastest ways that we can create economic justice for the city. Further, there have been a couple of analyses about what Baltimore might look like in the next 20 to 60 years, 30 to 60 years, sorry. And one suggests that our climate will look more like that of Tennessee to Northern Mississippi, while another suggests that there isn't actually an existing comparison in the US of where Baltimore's climate will be in the next 30 to 60 years. So keep that in mind when we're talking about the urgency here when it comes to climate justice. And so I hope that those pieces are truly highlighted, not only in this bill, but any subsequent bill, that we have to be more oriented towards the net zero aspect and even more aggressive than that, than any sort of carbon neutrality. Thanks.
Thank you. And last, we have Steph Compton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for opening the testimony back up for public comment. Stephanie Compton, Energy Justice Network. I live in Baltimore City and support the Cleaner Baltimore Coalition. So I did submit a written, so I'll keep it short. I just wanted to clarify to my written testimony and thank the Councilman Conway for his leadership on addressing the threat of climate change. And then just address that the issue with carbon neutrality and that we support the amendments to move to net zero and that we're looking into the issues of a carbon tax and how it could be effective at the local level if done right. We do have a research student helping us with that right now. We will submit that to Councilman Conway's office once we do receive that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I think that concludes the public testimony.
So that's going to conclude public testimony. And it looks like Councilman Conway, before we vote on the resolution, that he has something to share.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, I really appreciate the folks who testified, gave insights on how we can improve this. There are two additional bills that are up for consideration for this committee that if folks are not aware, I just wanted to put on their radar. One is for a Zero Waste Commission to really begin to talk about exactly what it would take to get off of Bresco. That commission would help us figure out what we need to do to get there. I know it's been a longstanding goal of the city to do that, but we've come short of that goal a number of times and I think that'll be our next best step to get there. And then adjoining this, this resolution, there is an ordinance that would require that the city reach, that the city government get to a carbon neutrality goal by 2050. We're going to amend that goal to match this, but just wanted to put that on people's radars to understand that this is something that the, the council is taking very seriously and we want to get it right. And I really appreciate you guys' testimony and, and we're listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Conway. We are going to move to the vote. Is there a vote to, excuse me, is there a motion to recommend the resolution favorably as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Torrance.
Okay, so was that a move by Conway? Okay, motion by Conway, second by Councilman Bullock. McCray, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Quarter?
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes.
Schleifer? Okay. Let me just double check and see if Councilman Schleifer is with us. Has he dropped to an attendee? Okay, so Councilman Schleifer is absent at this time. The motion has passed six to zero. The committee will report the resolution at the next city council meeting. I want to thank everyone for joining us this morning and this hearing is now adjourned.